Yes, ma'am.
Good evening to everybody. We'd like to welcome you to our Monday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five Greensville County School Board meeting. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Board Chair Ruston Jesse.
Here.
Vice Chair Janet Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Mrs. Reed Moore.
Here.
Thank you. Now seeking a motion to go into closed session to discuss student matters two point two dash three seven one one A two as well as personnel two point two dash three seven one one A one.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making a noise by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, none that ayes have it. We now move into closed session.
Again, we'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening for our Monday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five Greensville County School Board meeting. It is an honor to see so many people in the building today. Clerk, can you certify closed session?
Yes, Board Chair Ruston Jesse.
Yes.
Vice Chair Janet Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Pearson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'd like to open up our session with an invocation led by Mr. Pearson.
Let us bow our heads. The Heavenly Father, once again, will be coming for you this afternoon. First of all, we come thanking you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father, we ask and pray right now that you just continue to stretch your loving arms of protection around all of us. God, we ask and pray right now you continue to bless our school division, continue to bless our staff, continue to bless our teachers, but most of all, continue to watch over our kids, our youth. Heavenly Father, we know, Heavenly Father, we put all these things in your hand, you would do. Heavenly Father, that's what you say you would do. We thank you, we love you, we magnify your name. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Next up is just celebrating our mission and our vision at GCPS. Our mission is together with families and the community. GCPS is committed to providing a safe, rigorous, student-centered environment that empowers learners. Our vision is cultivating excellence, transforming lives, and impacting futures. Next up is item number four, the approval of our agenda, and we're seeking a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item B is the approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Again, all those in favor, making it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Moving on to section five, our superintendent's report and information items.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to begin the corrective action plan update. Greensville County Public Schools is under memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Department of Education, and each month, we provide a corrective action plan update under the auspices of the memorandum of understanding. Under the component priority number one, academic and student success, attended Region Eight superintendent meetings with a focal point on VIVAS and CIP, facilitated data discussions with Greensville Elementary School, data discussions with Wyatt Middle School, as well as data discussions with Greensville County High School. The superintendent, internal auditor, and chief inclusion officer met with SPID on maintenance of effort in moments in time, met with the National Organization Final Site for Superintendent's Evaluation of Instruction, and the superintendent participated in VIVAS University Discussion, which is forthcoming in Cary, North Carolina. We're continuing our efforts for units of justice here at the Greensville County High School, and each week, and also now beginning, had a first staff meeting with all the faculty and staff here at Greensville County High School, where we're looking to fully implement units of justice here at Greensville County High School. Had our senior executive leadership meetings, also had conference calls with our Office of School Qualitative Liaison, Dr. Johnson, and with directors, coordinators, and supervisors on working on the work session on February the eighteenth and also on March the fourth under leadership and governance. The school board held a board work session on February the twenty-eighth on policy and finance. The superintendent and internal auditor met on the CALP two, and another CALP two was came out this past week. The superintendent participated in legal webinar on immigration and also on the vast budget session as we are just coming into our budget session. Further discussion was held on future security grants. Once again, the walkway at GES is near completion, and we're going to look in at providing a fence for Greensville Elementary School along the wood line. Under human resource leadership, priority number four, staffing meetings with principals were held for the 2025-2026 school year. Frontline training continues and continue to update and revise policies. Under priority number five, community relations and communications. Develop and implement practices to effectively communicate with stakeholders. Continue to implement GCPS now and continuously updating website and social media platforms and posting school events on social media. Mr. Chairman, and to the board, that concludes the March 2025 corrective action plan update.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Edwards? All right. Um, at this time, we are going to move up just a little bit. We do need an approval of our warrants. This was supposed to be done in section four of the consent agenda. So if you can take a look, and we're seeking a recommendation for a motion to approve our warrants.
So move. Second.
That's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, make that known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Those ayes have it, and that motion is carried.
Ms. Chairman, under my updates, also I'd like to call Dr. Ferguson, who will give us another preview of the upcoming 2025-2026 school calendar, and we will be bringing that to the board and taking it back to the superintendent advisory council for another look as we want to unveil our 2025-2026 calendar. So, Dr. Ferguson, please give us an overall view. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Jesse, board members, Superintendent Edwards, community. Just an update to our 25-26 school calendar. School will begin 20- in the 25-26 school year on August 11th. In August, that is August. We will actually have a full summer off this time because we will be ending on, I was going to say March. We will be ending on May 23rd, so we will have a full summer. But the first day of school is August 11th. We will have the required holiday on September 1st. That is Labor Day, so there is no school August 29th, which is the Friday before, and then no school that Monday, which is, which is Labor Day. Our second quarter would begin October 15th, 2025. Thanksgiving break would be November 27th through the 28th, and that marking period would end on December 19th. That means that the first semester for the second year in a row will end before we go home for the holiday, for Christmas break. Christmas break is from December 22nd until June 2nd.
Dr. Ferguson.
I'm trying to give y'all a gift. From December 22nd until January 2nd. We will again in January of 2026 have the Teacher Work Day, which is January 5th, and students will return on January 6th. We do have built into the calendar Martin Luther King Day, that's January 19th, which is a holiday, and President's Day, which is February 16th. The end of that marking period is March 11th. Fourth marking period, fourth quarter, we will have a holiday on April 3rd, and then spring break is from April 6th through April 10th. So we have April 3rd off and then April 6th through April 10th. Graduation, May 15th. There would be no school for seniors and an early release to accommodate graduation because of the early start time at the high school. We will have early release day, May 20th and May 21st, and the last day for students is May 21st. Last day for teachers, May 22nd, and May 25th is a holiday. Summer learning that year would begin June 1, 2026. Oh, and all teachers would report July 30th, 2025. I missed that, that's the beginning.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Ferguson? Thank you for sharing, and we're still going to celebrate that we're getting out before Memorial Day this year.
Yes.
That's what I'm purposeful right to say.
We are.
Thank you. All right, next up is a Top Hand presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Edwards, board members, community members, and guests. I first off wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity to present and to speak to everyone tonight. So I just want to start off by introducing myself. My name is Haley Mumal, and I am a third-year occupational therapy student at Mary Baldwin's Murphy Demming of College of Health Sciences, and I'm currently completing my doctoral project in collaboration with Top Hand Foundation, where we are creating an adaptive sports program for children with disabilities. So we have a little presentation, but I'll just kind of talk about the agenda, like what we'll talk about tonight. We're just going to talk about what adaptive sports are, the risks that children with disabilities face, and then the benefits of adaptive sports, and kind of dive a little deeper into each of those topics. Okay. So, um... So what are adaptive sports? So occupational therapy, our goal is to help people engage in meaningful occupations regardless of a diagnosis, an injury, or a disability. And so we help occupations or anything that you do in everyday life. So this could be getting dressed in the morning, it could be brushing your teeth, it could be taking care of kids, it could be taking care of pets or playing sports. And so adaptive sports are where we're adapting and modifying the sport so that anyone, regardless of their ability, is able to participate regardless of that diagnosis, regardless of the disability, or regardless of the injury. Okay. So we learned a little bit about what adaptive sports are, so now we're going to talk about the risks that children with disabilities face. So part of my capstone is I completed a comprehensive literature review where I had the opportunity to dive into the literature and the research to better understand these risks. And so this is just, this is not a comprehensive list, but this is just common themes that I saw amongst the literature. And so one of the biggest things is that they're at higher risk for social isolation, and this is mostly due to because of lack of opportunities to engage in different activities. And so if you think about it, when we engage in different activities, we have the ability to connect with our peers and build relationships, but when you don't have those opportunities, it can lead to some loneliness, and then that in turn can lead to an impact on your mental health. They were also feeling unheard. So unfortunately, across the United States, there's a lack of accessible programs for children with disabilities. And so it's reported that both these children and their families feel that there's not a lot of opportunities and that their needs are not being met by the community. And so I kind of highlighted on the limited opportunities, but I think back to me growing up, if I wanted to try a new sport or a new hobby, I was kind of able to go to my parents and talk to them, and we could go sign up, and that is not necessarily the case for these children. I believe the nearest program is about an hour away in South Hill, and they might not even know about these programs that are there. And so there's just limited opportunities for them. And then that emotional distress, you know, they're at higher rate, they're at higher risk for anxiety, depression, and then that leads to a lot of other concerns later in life as well. Can also look at bullying. These children are at an increased risk for bullying just because sometimes the way they communicate or the way they interact with people is not always understood. And then we talked about this, but mental health, it's poor, and then lower physical activity. So these children have less opportunities to be more physically active, which can lead to heart disease, obesity, and other conditions that negatively impact their quality of life. So I just kind of wanted to highlight some statistics in Virginia to better understand why there is a need for this program. So over 100,000 children with disabilities in Virginia have limited access to either physical activity or sports. In Virginia, the number of children with IEPs rose from 8% from 2022 to 2023. And then as of 2024, 14% to 15% of Virginia's K-12 students are receiving special education services. So I think these numbers highlight why there is a need for this program right here within the Emporia community. So the Top Hand in Hand program, it is focusing on helping reduce these risks and helping these children grow in like physically, emotionally, and socially. And so part of this program is we are also creating educational handouts just to raise awareness on different diagnoses and then offering free resources for both parents and community members to utilize. And with these resources, we were able to utilize the parent.org website that is offered by the public schools to like raise awareness of you can join this session to learn more about a specific topic, and we kind of outline those topics that related to that diagnoses. And so this is a really quick video I wanted to show you guys. It is unique because it highlights multiple perspectives from both the athletes, the volunteers, and the parents. Okay, no worries. So this is just a video, if anyone's interested, can send the link to it, but it is from a miracle league and out west somewhere, I believe. And so you really just get to see how the volunteers benefited from it, the athletes, and then the parents. So it's really eye-opening and really interesting to watch if you guys get a chance. And so I'm really quick. That video kind of talked about some of the benefits of adaptive sports, so I kind of wanted to dive a little bit more into this. And once again, this is not a comprehensive list. These are just kind of some of the main points that I saw when researching and looking at the literature. So if we think about it, it's going to improve our overall health. We're getting more physically active, we're connecting with our peers, so we're reducing that risk of depression and anxiety. It's going to help develop those life skills. I think back to when I played sports and how a lot of the lessons that I learned are applicable to so many aspects of my life now. And so we're allowing them to have this opportunity to work on teamwork and communicating with others, and that kind of goes into improving social skills. So we're letting them learn how to communicate with others. I had the opportunity to do one of my field works in a pediatric rotation, and so here, we worked a lot with these kiddos and just learning like how to communicate appropriately, but the issue was there wasn't a lot of areas where they could go practice those skills. So this is a safe environment for those to practice those skills that are going to be applicable later in life. And then just inclusion, if we think about it, they don't feel like their needs are being heard, and so this program fosters like a sense of inclusion and helps us, or helps them create friendships as well along the way. And then also the benefit of peer support. So with this program, our idea is to partner these athletes with what we will call a friend, and the friend will support the athlete in a variety of different ways depending on the child's ability. And so these are just some of the benefits of peer support. That increased sense of inclusion, which we talked about, emotional support, communication, which we've covered, social connections, which we've covered, and then promoting that learning engagement for skills that can be applicable to later in life as well. And so benefits for volunteers, I think, kind of covered how this is really beneficial for children with disabilities, but it's also beneficial for anyone else involved as well, including volunteers. So I actually had the opportunity to volunteer at a miracle league this past fall, and even though I had done all this research and knew the risks that they face, being a part of this experience was really eye-opening and just helped me grow. It kind of puts things into perspective for you sometimes. So we think about for the volunteers, it's helping them grow personally. It's helping them gain understanding of others that not everyone is going to communicate the same way. They may not run the same way, but at the end of the day, we can still build those relationships that are very meaningful. It brings a stronger sense of community. These individuals are not really feeling like their needs are being heard or met, and so a program like this brings everyone together. It works on those teamwork skills, helps them feel accomplished, and then just increased awareness. So really quickly, I'll share a story. My dad went with me one time to volunteer at one of these sessions, and afterwards, he tried, made the comment to me that it really changed his perspective on things because he had the opportunity to talk to parents, and these parents were able to connect with individuals that they felt understood where they were coming from. Because if we think about it, they said they couldn't just go on playdates because it was just anxiety and stress ridden for them because they couldn't just leave their child and maybe go chat with the mom or dad. So it allowed them a chance to connect with other families, and he really saw the impact that adaptive sports has and made him realize like how much we kind of sometimes take for granted because with my brother and I, you know, he was able to just sign us up and didn't have to worry about if a program was accessible or not. And so this next one is just another video talking about the importance of inclusion. Once again, gives different points of view, and it's really powerful. So if you get the chance, I highly recommend to watch. And so with Top Hand in Hand, we're really aiming to create an accessible sports league. Like you said, that's going to break down those barriers that these children face every day and help them build relationships and improve that overall physical and mental health. And so what can we do? We're going to be starting this league up, and so there's two QR codes here, and I also have handouts if anyone's interested. But if you know anyone that would want to be an athlete, they can scan that QR code to sign up. But also as a volunteer, you could be a friend, a coach, equipment coordinator, an operations coordinator. Once again, scan that QR code or simply just email me. We would love to have volunteers, and just because it's going to be four weeks, starting in March to April, on Monday evenings from 5:30 to 7:00. If you can only come for one week, we would still love to have you. If you can come for all four weeks, we'd love to have you. I think it's going to be a great way for to bring the community together and really raise awareness. And then other ways to help, you can contact Top Hand if you're interested in sponsoring a team or just helping us spread the word. I think right now, it's one of our biggest challenges is just getting the word out there so that people know that this is available. So if you can spread the word, we would love that. And these are, I have some references, and then if you guys have any questions, feel free to contact me or talk to me tonight. Thank you, guys.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Haley? Awesome. Thank you so much for the presentation. All right, moving along, next up is our improvement association update.
I'm Mr. Chair, and I'm superintendent and members of the Board of School Board. I've been so many Board of Supervisors meeting here lately, calling Board of Supervisors. I've been so many Board of Supervisors meeting here lately, calling Board of Supervisor, a school, but man, Rufus Tyler, Director of the Improvement Association. Thank you for giving the opportunity to come tonight to give you a brief synopsis and some, some things that we're doing here in Greensville County. As you know, the Improvement Association serves Sussex area, Greens, Emporia, Brunswick, and then with the Head Start program. We also provide other services here in the Greens Emporior area. I have with us, some of our staff here, our Head Start Director here, one of our teachers here, Education Coordinator, which will be coming, and one of our parents. Before I get started, let me just mention, I'd be remiss not to thank you, first of all, for the coordination we've had since 1990 with the Head Start program. But also, I would like to give a shout out to two individuals who we worked very closely together on your administration to make sure that families who are kids about to be homeless, to prevent them from becoming homeless and get them to ensure they come to school. And Dr. Donna Waves, I don't know him. And I do know Belinda A. Stroff. Have worked very closely. There are times when our board realized that in order for kids to learn, they have to be in school. And all the kids that be in school, the family needs someplace to stay. So we have pooled our resources with your staff through the Vicelli Vento Home Assistance Act to ensure that a lot of families' kids have a decent, sanitary place to stay. So I just feel like I need to give them credit because and Dr. It's Dana? 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 I mean, he went to the point, I don't know who he is, I've never met him. To say, Mr. Tyler, if they don't pay a dime back, I'll take care of that. Don't tell everybody that we said that. But that's to the commitment of the people on your staff. And sometime those things go unnoticed of where people really have a genuine concern. But I will turn it over to our Education Coordinator, Ms. Ricks, who will come.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. I come before you just to share some information about your wonderful children in Greensville County. And I have my teachers here with me to support this data that I just want to share with you. And what I'm giving you tonight is some of our fall data. I have to work this machine by myself too. Oh, I'm doing too much. Oh, great. Now it's going to go real fast. We have 31 scholars here in Greensville. We have two classrooms, we have two certified teachers, two TAs, six support staff. They've conducted 62 home visits, 31 parent teacher conference, and they've had one community field trip. We have assisted the families with comprehensive services. Food, utility, mortgage, and rental assistance. Our teachers work hard in the classroom with the children, and this is just some of the data. When they leave here and come to you, we expect our children to have reached the benchmarks, at least 80%. But trust me, the children that leave Greensville, our Head Start classrooms, they come to you, they're at 100%. Every year, they haven't let us down. So that means our staff is working very hard. This is just some of the fall data, where the children were when they came to us. And this is our three and four-year-olds for social emotional skills. They were at 42%. They were meeting that benchmark at 57%. For physical development, they were at 34%. And then they met it at 57%. And we're worried about all of our children meeting their benchmarks. For language skills, they started out in the beginning at 39% and they were meeting it at 58.9%. For cognitive, 50%. And they were meeting it at 49%. Literacy skills, 64%. And they were meeting it at 34.9%. And then for math skills, they were at 75% and they were meeting them at 23%. And we'll share this data again for our transition ceremonies. And trust me, Greensville children, 90 to 100% every year. You should be proud of the children that we send to you. They've had that Head Start. Class data, yeah, clap for your children. I don't know how many people in here were in Head Start, but y'all should be proud. Our class data, where we have an observer go in and we look at the classroom teacher, how she interacts with the children. And every year, the Improvement Association, we exceed that percentage. So it's broken down into emotional support. And Greensville, we're at 6.53%. And for classroom organization, 5.46. And for instructional support, which nationwide everyone's struggled with, we're at 3.67. And we've exceeded that benchmark. Uh-oh. So now I'm going to share with you some of the data. A lot of people were familiar with PALS, but they changed it to Virginia Language and Literacy Screener. And we screened the children, the four-year-olds in language and literacy. And for letter sounds, in the fall, they were growing at 44%. They were in the beginning stage at 47% and we had 9% strong. And then for syllables, in the beginning stage for the four-year-olds, they were at 5%. Were really 6%. They were growing at 24 and then they were strong at 70%. For letter sounds, they were beginning at 84%. They were growing at 13% and they were strong at 3%. Beginning sounds, 67% beginning, 11% growing, and 22% strong. And those are four-year-olds. Now for the three-year-olds, and what's also awesome, a lot of our three-year-olds do return. And so they leave from Eleanor Jarrell and they go over to Greensville. And both teachers kind of teach the same. So that's why your children are just so fortunate because they had a Head Start at three and then they go straight over into a classroom that's doing the same curriculum in the four-year-old classroom. For three-year-olds, we had 59% that were beginning, 27% growing, and 14% that were strong. Letter sounds, we had 88%, 89% beginning. That's 6% growing and 5% strong. And our three-year-olds, believe it or not, some of them, they're not potty trained. So in the fall, they're not worried about the letter sounds and alphabets. We just trying to get them to the bathroom. Get them potty trained so they can learn. So we do a lot. Syllables for the three-year-olds, you had 32% beginning, 13% strong, and 13% growing, and 55% strong. And then for the beginning sounds, for the three-year-olds, you had 64% that was beginning. You had 30% growing and 6% strong. And Head Start, like I say, we do a whole lot. We have parent engagement, our parents are involved, we do home visits, we have parent center activities. The children have homework, parent-child engagement activities they take home. The parents come in and help in the classroom. We have parent teacher conference, parents volunteer with their child. They attend dental appointments, medical appointments. And we make sure the parents come in and read and are engaged in our classroom. And we are currently accepting applications for the 24, 25, 25, 26 school year. So you can send them to our office and we'll be doing recruitment. That's our Board of Directors Chair, Mr. Charlie Cable. You saw Mr. Rufus Tyler and Ms. Kelly. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move to our special recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if it pleases the board, we do have a parent here that would like to say something on behalf of Head Start, Ms. Kiana Washington.
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Good afternoon to the board and all of attendance. My name is Kiana Washington. I have a son that is in the three-year-old Head Start classroom. Just would like to say all great things. I decided to go back to school last year, so working full-time and then school full-time. Having Head Start as an option to have my son go to, where he's still actually learning and improving to be able to go to the next level was really a big help for us also as far as like just more engagement. Probably things that you wouldn't think about engaging with your child at home. You get to go to the classroom and see them grow and just see where they are compared to where they were when you sent them. So it's a, it's a big help and it's a great program. So as she said, they are enrolling. If you have three-year-olds, four-year-olds, get them signed up.
Thank you.
Chairman Jesse, board members, Dr. Edwards, colleagues, and guests, good evening.
Good evening.
It is always an honor to stand before you to recognize our staff and students. And especially tonight because we have so many students in the room. So the first thing we're going to do tonight is recognize our boys and girls basketball teams for Wyatt Middle School and Greensville County High School. I'm going to ask I'm going to ask Coach Anderson to join me to recognize Wyatt's athletes and recognition for the season.
Okay, can I get the, the boys' basketball team to come up? Come on, don't be shy. All right, um, this is my boys' basketball for the year. They finished the season on number one for Eastern Division champs. And they finished the season also number one in the conference. So conference champs on top of that. So they did it all the way. Eastern Division and Conference Champs.
The Greensville County Board of Education honors and celebrates E.W. Wyatt Boys Basketball Team 24, 2024, 2025 season in recognition of your outstanding dedication, teamwork, and achievement bringing pride and excellence to our school and community. Success is the result of preparation, hard work, and perseverance. Congratulations.
All right, up next, I'm going to have my young ladies, Lady Panthers, y'all come on up. My ladies, they also was Eastern Division Champions. And they finished conference runner-ups.
The Greensville County Board of Education honors and celebrates the E.W. Wyatt Girls Basketball Team 2024, 2025 season in recognition of your outstanding dedication, teamwork, and achievement bringing pride and excellence to our school and community. Success is a result of preparation, hard work, and perseverance. Congratulations. All right, so next we're going to ask Coach Manning to come up as we recognize the Lady Eagle.
Good evening, Dr. Edwards, School Board members, guests. The Vashy Girls Basketball Team finished district play tied for first place with a 13-1 record. Young ladies, come on up, I'm sorry. So the girls finished with a 13-1 record, 14-6 overall. Vashy Girls Basketball Team was co-Tri River District champs and Tri River District Tournament runner-ups. Senior Shania Brooks was first team Tri Rivers District and Co-Player of the Year for the district. Second team, I mean, excuse me, first team all-region. Freshman Aviana Stevens was first team Tri River District. Sophomore Camille Walton was first team Tri River District. And Senior DeKaya Atkins was honorable mention. Chairman Randolph was co-Coach of the Year. Our trophies are in the office. I did present them to Dr. PJ, who has been excellent and with great pride. I love to share.
All right, Greensville County Board of Education honors and celebrates the Greensville County High School Girls Basketball Team 2024, 2025 season in recognition of your outstanding dedication, teamwork, and achievement bringing pride and excellence to our school and community. Success is a result of preparation, hard work, and perseverance. Congratulations.
Okay, with the Vashy Boys Basketball Team come up. The Varsity Boys Basketball Team would finish with a 13-1 record, 19-7 overall. The Varsity Boys were Triborough District regular season champs and tournament champs. They were 2A region tournament runner-ups and played in the quarterfinals of the Virginia High School State Playoffs. Senior Azad Parker, first-team Triborough District and Co-Player of the Year. Mr. Parker also scored his 1,000 point this year. Mackay Phillips was first-team Triborough District and second-team 2A region. Azad was first-team 2A region. Noah Roger was second-team Triborough District. Najee Parker was second-team Triborough District. And Coach Antoine Walton was co-coach of the year for the Triborough District and coach of the year for the 2A region. And I had a little sidebar here. Needless to say, Dr. Posit James is so proud of her student athletes and the accomplishment that we have.
The Greensville County Board of Education honors and celebrates the Greensville County High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team in recognition of your outstanding dedication, teamwork and achievement, bringing pride and excellence to our school and community. Success is the result of preparation, hard work and perseverance. Congratulations. We would also like to give a huge shout-out and thank you to our coaches, staff and families who have supported the teams throughout the season. Okay, I only have a couple more. Maintenance Worker Appreciation Day was March 7th. We recognized our maintenance department last month, but tonight we want to recognize the hard work and dedicated maintenance team of Greensville County Public Schools. They could not be here tonight, but we wanted to let them know that we truly appreciate their behind-the-scenes efforts day-to-day. Also, Women's History Month is celebrated in March. During Women's History Month, we celebrate the remarkable achievements, resilience and contributions of women who have shaped history and continue to inspire future generations. We proudly recognize the incredible women of Greensville County Public Schools whose dedication, leadership and hard work make a lasting impact on our students, schools and community. Our commitment to education, innovation and student success helps to cultivate excellence, transform lives and impact futures every day. So to all the women who are still here, young and seasoned, please stand. Young folk were here before. Thank you all for your invaluable contributions every day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving right along, we're gonna go to our Virginia Tiered Systems of Support update. Good evening, everyone, Board Chair, Division Superintendent, all in attendance. I'm gonna stand before you to be as brief as possible just to give you an overview and some updates as it relates to Virginia Tiered Systems of Support. And so while we are, just for the sake of time, while we are waiting for the slide deck to upload, I will tell you that Virginia Tiered Systems of Support basically is a collective of organizations funded and led by the Virginia Department of Education to support divisions with implementing and sustaining a multi-tiered system of support. MTSS. Multi-tiered Systems of Support, commonly known as MTSS, is a systematic data-driven approach that allows divisions and schools to provide targeted, evidence-based interventions to meet the needs of their students. And of course, this is done through a clearly defined process that is implemented to fidelity by all stakeholders within the school and division. Currently, we have three schools implementing MTSS, PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Of course, the Greensville County High School, Wyatt Middle School and Greensville Elementary. Our VTSS implementation logic, it is held together, of course, by outcomes, but embedded. We have data, systems and practices. And of course, data informs decisions about screening progress. Systems, we invest, leadership teams support professional learning and coaching. With practices, we prioritize efficient and effective practices, which is evidence, culture and context. And of course, with the outcomes, we always have to differentiate and ensure outcomes are reflective of all students. So what is Tiered Fidelity Inventory? And essentially, it's a valid, reliable and efficient measure of the extent to which school personnel are applying the core features of school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports. So each year, we have the opportunity to check, do a temperature check or pulse check of how we're doing. And so what we have before you, the next few slides, will have data points which are captured. 2024 Tiered Fidelity Inventory. And what you see at the top is average overall score. And of course, we always want to have a hit our fidelity score of 70. But of course, if you look at for 2024, we're at 43%. And so we have about a gap of about 27-28% there. At mid-year 2024, a total of four schools submitted to Tiered Fidelity Inventory, or commonly known as TFI, of these schools. Four submitted at mid-year 2021, four at mid-year 2020, four at mid-year 2019 and four at mid-year 2018. And of course, if you look at the bottom graph there, the average score by tier, we're looking, of course, at 2024 embedded by a little lighter shade of blue. But that's about 60, we fell at tier one, 60%, tier two, 32% and tier three with the average score by tiers of 34%. So we're off our mark with 34%, roughly about 36 and 38 and 10% respectively. So we have some work to do to close some gaps. If we look at 2024 Tiered Fidelity Inventory, tier one, and this is the average score by tier-one subscales, of course, again with fidelity of 70%. We're right at for 2024, we're at 58%, off by about 12%. 57% for implementation. We need to close that gap by about 13%. And then we have evaluation, which we're at 67%. Not too bad, but far difference from where we were in 2023. We have a gap to close of about 3%, looking at about 67% for evaluation. 2024 Tiered Fidelity Inventory, tier two. 33% for teams. Interventions, 30%. Evaluation, 33%. So we're about 37% between teams and evaluation that we need to close some gaps and then a high-end mark of 40% for interventions where we need to close some gaps just to get to where we would have a fidelity of 70%. Our last data point slide I want to share is 2024 Tiered Fidelity Inventory, tier three. Of course, we're looking at for teams, 38%. Resources, 39%. Support plans, 33%. And evaluation, 29%. Now, part of what we do as a team also, we collect data under the District Capacity Assessment. And just a Cliff Notes version of what this is, is school districts implement effective innovations that benefit students. The capacity of a district to facilitate building-level implementation refers to the systems, activities and resources that are necessary for schools to successfully adopt and sustain effective innovations. And so when we look at where we are as a district, captured by our 2024 district capacity, this is the overall DCA percentage score. It includes overall percentage scores for all collection periods on record. And we're just paying special attention to 2024. We're at 48%. We have some work to do in this regard. If we look at it from '23, at 69%. But we did very well on the onset of COVID-19 pandemic in 2021, 74%. So we surpassed our fidelity measures. And so we have to close some gaps here. So who serves on the division leadership team? We have central office, school administrators, transportation supervisors and communities and school rep. We also have three VTSS division coaches and school coaches. Mrs. Phelps represents Wyatt Middle School alongside Dr. Jones. We have Mrs. Coker, who supports GES alongside Mrs. Gail Staten. And then also lastly, we have Dr. Stiff, who supports Greensville County High School alongside Mrs. Etwas Warren. And we all collectively meet monthly just to talk about best practices so that we could yield the highest results as it relates to VTSS and MTSS. Again, our division leadership team, as I alluded to, we meet monthly. And some of the data points that we are, or some of the initiatives that we are putting our focus on, of course, we have a shout-out here. For 2023-24, we increased attendance alongside with all the faculty, staff and school executives' hard work. From 65.3% to 78.5% of students who were present 90% or more days. And so a lot of deeper dives, discussions, drill downs to see what's working and what's not. We've also set goals for the '24-'25 school year for attendance. By May 2025, GCPS will have 87% of students present, 90% or more days. Of course, for science, by May 2025, 75% of students will pass their science end-of-year assessment, fifth grade science, eighth grade science and biology. Looking at the alignment with division priorities, we also want to have a laser focus on our crosswalks between the Correction Active Plan and Comprehensive Strategic Plan. And so what we have here, we've captured our priorities, one, two. Priority one, academics and student success. And our goals, one and two, student learning and academic excellence, high-quality, committed and diverse workforce. And so the drill downs are to embed these with EAs, also known as Essential Actions, Objective Strategies, Objective Descriptives, Key Performance Indicators and Core Competencies, Components and Features and Capacity Indicators, so that we can always have a pulse on what we're doing and how the students are performing across boards, across all school sectors. Alignment with the Office of School Quality, OSQ. Our focus has been primarily on attendance. And I won't bore you by reading all of this information, but essentially, we are doing the work cross-alignment with the division's priorities and was set forth by the Office of School Quality. The same holds true for science, alignment with the Office of School Quality as well. The last slide we have here is VTSS Grant Funding Opportunity. And they were, we were allowed $15,000 to support initiatives. And we've put our emphasis on science support under the umbrella of increasing science scores. I know that $15,000 was split amongst three schools. And so that kind of gave a round figure of $5,000 per school. After some of the funds were already encumbered, it was a little bit less. But our school executives, our science personnel, staff, lead science teachers and other support person, we were able to be strategic with the funding. And we are hopeful that these funds will be utilized effectively and efficiently to support science across all tested areas. That concludes my VTSS/MTSS presentation. At this time, if we have any questions, I'll entertain them. Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving along, the next item is our Special Education Annual Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lady Cole, Ms. Rita Williams, Director of Pupil Personnel.
Just to even out, is it the Special Ed- 2025, 2026 Special Education Annual Plan? Heartbeat Flow Through Application.
It's on tabs, but the way it's presented, you all have it on paper. So it's not gonna look the same. So you're gonna have to, do I have control of the flipper? Okay. So I'll click to the first page if you need to review. Okay. So of course, our entity name is Greensville County Public Schools. And can you, you can click on the cover and search for the next tab. So included in the annual plan will be the school division's name, the date that the school board will approve the plan and then its signature for Dr. Edwards. Once we get that, after next month, you all will vote on the plan. This is for the review for this month. So go to the LEA Assurance Certification. Okay, go, keep scrolling up. Up, not down. So there are a lot of preliminary pages in here. So if you could go to the, keep scrolling up. So the first section is the Section 427 of the General Education Provision Act. This act, this enacted part of the Improving the American School Act of Public Law 103, 382 to include in this application- one oh three, three eighty-two, to include in this application. The description that includes the, the characteristics are gender, race, national origin, color, disability, and age. They also would like for us to describe how our entity existing mission policies or commitments ensure equitable access to and equitable participation in the general education setting. Greensville County Public School is committed to non-discrimination with regard to sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, race, color, national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, I mean, ancestry, age, marital status, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, military status, genetic information, or any other characteristics prohibited by law. This commitment prevails in all of its policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs, and services, and individuals, and entities with whom the board does business. GCPS assures that all persons are supported regardless of background, resources, interests, goals, or abilities. All persons have access and can participate in all programs, including federally funded projects and activities. Equitable access and participation guaranteed to all students are provided the necessary individual elementary aids and supplementary aids, excuse me, and services modifications and or accommodations or supports needed to participate in the general education curriculum as appropriated to meet the need of all students. The special education grant six eleven and six nineteen will comply with section four twenty-seven of the General Education Provision Act, GEP, highlighting six barriers that can impede equitable access to participation, gender, race, national origin, disability, color, or age. GCPS assures that the division has, in effect, policies, procedures, and programs which have been established and administered to comply with the IDEA and the federal regulations implementation, which are consistent with the policies, procedures, and regulations that Virginia Department of Education has established in accordance with IDEA. Number two is based on our proposed projected activity. What barriers are may impede equitable access and participation of students, educators, or other beneficiaries. Greensville County Public Schools has no barriers that may impede the access for participation of students, educators, or beneficiaries. And the next question was based on the barriers identified. There were no barriers identified, so therefore, we do not have any barriers there as well. And what is your timeline, including targeted milestones for addressing these identified barriers? So no barriers were identified. So therefore, we don't have a timeline to meet those barriers. Report of implementation. Submit a report indicating the extent to which the annual plan for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year has been implemented. The annual plan for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four was fully implemented by Greensville County Public School. Services were provided in the Southside Regional Jail as needed. GCPS adhered to the policies and procedures governing the provision of special education and related services required by the federal and state regulations. GCPS actively sought to hire from an unbiased pool of applicants and staff positions according to the regulation. GCPS collaborated with other agencies in the community to conduct child find throughout the year. The local special education advisory committee met regularly and reviewed the annual plan before presenting the local, excuse me, before presenting to the local school board. Policies and procedures and research-based practices were implemented in the schools. We provided staff professional development regarding special education processes, co-teaching, positive behavior interventions, assistive technology, special education legal issues, autism behavior challenges, alternative assessment, and social emotional support. So our next tab is the maintenance of effort. The maintenance of effort, this regulation requires school divisions to spend at least the same amount from at least one of the following sources, local funds, state local, state plus local funds, local per capita, or state plus local per capita for a current school year on the delivery of special education and related services as was spent for the most recent fiscal year, two thousand three, two, through two thousand twenty-four, for which the information is available subject to the subsequent year's rule. And it also means that we, that we supposed to spend the same amount or more funds on special education population as we spend on general education population. The, um, the projected estimated expenditure budget amounts provided must come from the district's two thousand five, two thousand, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six preliminary budget. It must be reviewed and confirmed by the division's fiscal officer. Our projected, estimated projected buzz budget for local funds for school year two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six is one, one million, two hundred, seven, two hundred, one million, seven hundred, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Local plus state estimated projected two million, six hundred, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred, twenty-five dollars. Per capita, five thousand, two hundred, forty-nine dollars in locally state. Excuse me, that was local, so locally state plus state is eight thousand, three dollars. Our December one head count, at December one, our head count for students with disabilities was three hundred forty-four students. We have sixteen students who are funded by CSA funds. They attend private day schools in the area. So our total population of students within the school division for our December one head count was three hundred and twenty-eight students. Two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six special education CCEIS and proportionate set aside amount. At this time, we do not have any, um, C, we, we were not recognized to set aside any funds, which would have been fifteen percent of the funds that were allotted for this school year. So nor do we have any proportionate set aside identified at this time. The proposed use of Part B, Section six eleven funds, grant period for July one, two thousand twenty-five through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. In a narrative format, please provide a descriptive and budget outline of all personnel. Salaries and benefits for the special education teachers at elementary, middle, and high school levels are, we identified for four special education full-time teachers and two special education paraprofessionals serving students with disabilities in the general education classroom setting. Okay. Our projected budget for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand, two thousand twenty-six is six hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred, eighty-eight dollars with servicing object code one thousand and two thousand for salaries and benefits for salaries, four hundred, four hundred, twenty-four thousand, three hundred, sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents in employee benefits. Object code two thousand, one hundred, eighty-five thousand, six hundred, seventy-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Total budgeted, proposed budget is the six hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred, eighty-eight dollars. Part B of the annual fund, Part B, Section six nineteen is for early childhood special education grant portion of the annual plan. Grant period, July one, two thousand twenty-five through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. And in narrative format, please provide a description and budget outline of all personnel to be supported in whole or in part with IDEA Part B, Section six nineteen grant funds. The Greensville County Public Schools Early Childhood Special Education Program provides instruction in a variety of settings. The four-year-old ECSE pre-kindergarten are included in the VPI classroom, and special education services are provided according to the student's individual needs. Some of these students may spend a portion of their day in the early childhood special education classroom. Two- and three-year-old early childhood special education students are educated in a self-contained setting, but interact with their typically developing peers in the cafeteria, on the playground, and in assemblies. Students are, students take several field trips yearly within the community and the region to reinforce learning in the natural environment. Total budgeted funds are used to support curriculum, fund field trips. During the, for the field trips, funding will, will include transportation, ticket admission, and food. Purchase classroom materials to implement students' IEPs, services, and goals. The amount that was awarded for the early childhood special education, where the proposed amount is to be awarded for the special education, early childhood program is ten thousand, ninety-three dollars. Purchased services, two thousand, five hundred dollars, and object code six thousand. Materials and supplies, seven thousand, five hundred, ninety-three dollars. That concludes my report. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is our micro grant, removing barriers related to academic achievement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lady call for Dr. Robinson for the presentation, the micro, micro grant.
Good evening, Board Chair Jesse, Vice Chair Roberts, Board Members, Superintendent, and Attendees. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this excited funding opportunity that will support the well-being and academic success of our students. GCPS has been awarded ten thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars in the form of a grant. The micro grant, removing barriers related to academic achievement, is designed to support initiatives that address obstacles impacting student learning, particularly in the areas of mental health, attendance, and engagement. The division will engage our family, community, engagement liaisons, Belinda Aestrop and Dr. Denise Avent to enhance student and family participation. We are proposing to use the funds that we've been awarded to continue implementing the parentguidance.org mental health series platform that we currently have in place. But we are going to revamp it just a little bit to increase the engagement from our families. Additionally, the grant funds will be used to purchase mental health awareness materials such as posters, pencils, bracelets, parent resource brochures, and we will additionally purchase student wellness journals that will be placed in the school guidance counselor's office so that families and students can access it as needed. So with your approval, this grant will allow us to take proactive steps in supporting our students' mental health, improving attendance, and remade, removing barriers to academic success. I respectfully request the board's approval to move forward with implementing this grant as written. Thank you for your time consideration, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, next up is our Assistant Principal Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lady call for Dr. Scott, who will give an update on the implementation and how the Assistant Principals Academy is going. Dr. Scott.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Jesse, School Board Members, and Superintendent Edwards. The Division Leadership Academy for Assistant Principals is designed to foster the development of strong instructional leaders who can guide our schools to excellence. The DLA supports and equips assistant principals with the knowledge, skills, and resources necessary to thrive in their roles and positively impact, impact the learning experience of our students and staff. The academy serves as a comprehensive professional development opportunity grounded in the values, values and goals of Greensville County Public Schools, and is dedicated to enhancing assistant principals' leadership abilities and preparing them for success in a rapid, evolving educational landscape. Throughout this program, APs will be engaged in relevant learning experiences that build their capacity in areas such as data-driven decision-making, collaborative leadership, teacher development, and fostering a culture of high expectations. Ultimately, the goal is to empower APs to lead with confidence, purpose, and a commitment to ensuring that every student reaches their full potential. The assistant principals will meet in six sessions, bi-monthly for ninety minutes between the month of January twenty-five and April twenty twenty-five. Each session will address the Virginia Department of Education principal evaluation standards. We have classroom walkthroughs, case studies, and relevant leadership activities and strategies that necess, that is necessary for continuous student progress. The agenda is before you. Our next meeting, as you can see, will, will be March twenty. Be sure to have the right agenda. Yes, March twelfth will be our next meeting, where we'll be doing Standards Three and Four. Standards Three, Human Resource Leadership, and Standard Four, Organizational Management. We would also do some group activities in a case manager, uh, case study with that. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, thank you. Next up is our two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six fiscal budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lady call for Mr. Ryder. Mr. Ryder and I will be presenting the budget presentation for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. And we'll begin, Mr. Ryder.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. This is the fiscal twenty-six budget that we have assembled so far. At this point, this is the, the discussion that will be leading up to what we'll be asking for from the city and the county. Because reasonably certain, the state funds are in the Calc tool. So. Oh, sorry about that. Okay, so the governor issued his, his budget on January seventh. And then a little later, this House and Senate versions both came out on the same day. And so the governor's budget was about twenty-two million, nine hundred, twenty-seven thousand for our school division. The House bill was twenty-three, five, twenty-seven, so it was quite a bit more. And, but unfortunately, the Senate's version was twenty-two million, five ninety. So it's three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars less than the governor's budget. So those are the three budgets in play. What we will be discussing from this point on is the governor's budget, because a lot of times, they just go with the governor's budget. So the projected revenues from these budgets and from what we have built was that the state revenue would be twenty-two million, nine eighty for fiscal twenty-six versus twenty-four million, three fifty-nine for this year. And so those are the major funding categories. The federal funding is, is, you know, just a best guesstimate at this time, because you don't have any of the grants applied for, or most of them. The school nutrition is fairly stable at roughly about the same one point eight million and a little bit more. Some of the local funding, not much change there. And then the local contribution. So the local contribution is what we'll be focusing on. Ten million, five ninety-three is what both the city and the state allocated for us this year. And on the following slide, we'll show you how we came up with the ten, ten million, eight ninety-eight. Well, graphically, it shows you here on this slide that the school, this school division derives a lot of its income from the state, fifty-eight percent of it. Then the, the upper blue and the orange, the county and city, ten, twenty-seven, another twenty-seven percent. So most of the funding for our school division comes from the state and the city and county. So when you take the same format, the expenses, as you can see, the top line there for instruction, which pays for teachers, teaching assistants, librarians, nurses. That is where the lion's share of your budget is. That's what should be in most school divisions. And so twenty-eight million of our thirty-nine million next year is slated for instruction. With the second largest of seven point eight million and change for operations. for operations, which houses the kids, the buildings, the buses, and utilities. And that, there is a balanced budget, that's $39,602, and the prior slide, the revenue was $39,602. So there's your balanced budget. And, and there again is the graph of the expenses. So there you ha, there you have, uh, your, obviously, your instruction is a, a very large portion, with 20% of your expenditures for operations. So the fun, funding request, did you?
Here's, here's our funding request. You know, we are scheduled to have a joint meeting, um, with the city and the county on March the 25th. And looking at our requests for the upcoming year, I gotta say, this is the first time in a long time that we received from, some news about insurance rates, and what we received is that we will have a 0% increase for the upcoming fiscal 2025 to 2026 school year.
Yeah.
That's unheard of, um, because traditionally, since 2021, we've been getting on average an increase of about 9%. When you look at what we're asking, what our funding requests will be, uh, increases for the fiscal year 2026 will include a 3% increase for all staff, um, rent on the central office, new location, and again, proud to say, 0% renewal increase on our healthcare for this fis, upcoming fiscal year with the local choice. In Governor Youngkin's budget, and his budget, there is a 3% salary increase for all standards of quality positions. Those are the licensed positions within the school division. When you look at Governor Youngkin's proposal, the SOQ positions provide this increase dependent upon the local match, and if you look at the local match, we will look at that in just a few slides. However, without the local match, there is no state funding. That is that, um, number that was in the previous slide that we will revisit again. And here is what we're asking. If you look at, for the fiscal year 2025, um, we received from the city of Emporia, Um, Emporia City has an ADM right now of 882. So the 3% local match that we're asking for from the city would be $61,224. The rent for the new location of $39,845, with a subtotal for fiscal year 2026 ask of $4,450,000. And we also ask, when you're looking at raises, that we want to include all staff. And so for the non-SOQ positions, we would need about $16,000 from the city of Emporia, and our non-SOQ staff would be maintenance, our, uh, transportation components, and when you look at our bus drivers, so we're asking for 3% for all personnel. And for the fiscal 2026, that appropriation we're looking at asking for, $4,466,000, and that'll be a total increase of $117,069 budget, uh, $306, $069. From the county, Greensville County, we receive $6,248,50. Right now, Greensville County has a population, student population of 1,040. For the SOQ match, we're asking $107,487. For the rent on the facility, $59,768. Total, $6,408,105. And for the non-SOQ positions, $24,000, for an appropriation ask of $6,432,105. And we've also put our projected numbers for, from the city of Emporia to be next year at 894, and for Greensville County, 1,017, for a total increase of $191,255, when you look at the overall budget.
So, uh, as you can see, the, I just wanted to mention that the 3% SOQ, those figures are calculated by the state of Virginia in the Calc tool. The other two columns are calculated by me, and the, uh, city asked for all of these things to be put into the request. And so, and so the overall budget, uh, request, uh, for, well, the overall budget being asked to be adopted when the city and the county, after we meet, uh, if they agreed to our figures, it would be $39,606,373, which is, uh, just slightly less than the, the year before, and one of the big reasons is, is of course, the state construction fund is, is not going to be in next year.
And so to the board, that is our presentation, and so, um, we look forward to any questions that you may have about this presentation we presented, this at the board work session. And so at this time, we entertain any questions, um, before, um, moving forward with our questions, um, as we ask for approval later on in today's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is our VSBA policy updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Policy Committee have been hard at work reviewing the policies. In your green folder on the left, you would see the VSBA policy updates for February. Um, we had a virtual meeting with VSBA on March 3rd to discuss all of the updates here, all of the policies that are listed. If you look in the left tab, it has each policy and what the changes are, whether it was cross-reference updated, um, legal references updated, is listed here for you, and all of these policies here are active with Greensville County Public Schools. But on page 3, J E C B, Admission of Non-Public Student Students for Part-Time Enrollment, we have to choose an option. So there was two options for that one, and then consent of, no, release of student data, that's an optional one to have. And we can discuss these in depth in the next policy meeting and bring them back next month. Um, on the right-hand side of the same folder are the policies for human resources, for personnel, for review. Um, we have been updating them with VSBA policy updates, um, but to make sure that we're reviewing every five years, this will knock out one section for us, um, if we get these reviewed, and then you can choose if there are anything in here that we need to In your yellow folders, on the left, the policies to collapse are the policies that we discussed, all of our leave and absences policies. To collapse into one, that you'll see on the right-hand side, draft, to put all of our staff leaves and absences in one document, followed by the revisions for the retirement payout, the revisions for the paid holiday, and then there are some revisions to the substitute In the policy revisions on the right-hand side in the yellow folder, all of the changes in the current policies are underlined. And in the black folder, we have the policy to retire on the left, which is the sick leave bank, and the policy to do, to adopt is the donation leave, and that's a draft of that policy, and it also includes an application for the donation pro, program, and then the request to donate your leave, all on the right-hand side. Are there any questions?
Not a question, maybe just to bring to light, because of all this work that's being done behind the scenes in the work sessions, um, can you speak to the difference between if I have, uh, days saved up in the sick leave bank as, as of right now? Is that transferred over to our donation?
If you have days in the sick bank right now, the discussion was to give the people, the members of the sick bank their leave days back. And so once they get their, their days back, they're theirs. If we move forward donating, any employee who needs it will complete an application for the leave, and then we will send it out to the schools, and any employee can choose to donate to the employee in need. Um, the employee asking for the days or requesting the days will have to exhaust all of their leave, and then employees can give the max of five days within a school year to another employee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Will this be implemented, um, also with frontline?
They will have to put in their requests for absences in frontline. So once we get all of the balances, the balances will be put into absence management, which is frontline.
Which will keep all this in real time?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next up is our Board Member Committee reports. I'll share a joke, since we're kind of real quiet, since all of our, um, student athletes have left, bless you. Um, it's not necessarily probably all the way professional, but the reason why we're a lot of quiet during these times is because our Board Member Committee reports are actually, um, stuff that we just described and talked about this evening. Um, I commend this board wholeheartedly for the work sessions that have been going on, um, over the, the last year, um, and a result of that is, is the policy presentation that just came out and the budget that was, um, talked about this evening as well, that was presented with us. Um, so from a policy committee, um, report, I guess Ms. Reedmore might not throw something at me, but, but it is, uh, hard work, there is some laughter, but there is a lot of policy revisions, um, that need to happen in Greensville County Public Schools, and are happening, um, which is why we get stacks like this after the meetings. Um, so I, I'll share that, I guess, humbly, uh, for, for finance. I'll, I'll turn it over to you guys if you have something, if not, just the, the amount of work that you're putting into it as well is greatly appreciated.
Just wanted to, uh, um, reiterate that the, uh, finance, Mr. Ryder, and Ms. Reddick and team, they're doing a good job as far as, um, the budget that we just presented here. A lot of things that we went through that were pretty much, um, self-explanatory, but I just want to commend that they're still doing a good job.
We were scheduled for a joint meeting with the schools who participate in the Governor's School Program, and thanks to the beautiful snow we had, we got to stay home. So we will, we will be rescheduling that meeting then, if you're gonna update it the next meeting. Dr. Edwards was so sad he wanted to go in this.
Yes, ma'am, sure did. Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, next is, is Section 6, uh, our action items, and the first one being our micro grant, uh, which was presented this evening, Removing Barriers Related to Academic Achievement.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is the, uh, micro grant that Dr. Robinson, and just to give an overall update and a recap, um, we would like to use the funding from the micro grant to further enhance our parent.org website and increase our partnership so that we can have these components, um, for the remainder of the school year. And so at this time, administration is seeking, um, approval from the board to, for the micro grant in the amount of $10,000 so that we can utilize these funds to further enhance our parent.org website.
Um, was there a date in which, in these, that?
Uh, yeah, Dr. Robinson, is there a date? Uh, do we have to spend these funds by this fiscal year, or what is that final cap date?
Yes, all funds will have to be spent by the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
No problem.
I'm sorry, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeking a motion?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Um, is there any more discussion in regards to the micro grant? All in favor, making note by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and motion carries. The next action item is the 2025, 2026 GCPS budget.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and administration, and we thank the board for the hard work and dedication at the work session, and the ongoing continuous conversation about the upcoming budget as we look to provide faculty and staff, all Greensville County faculty and staff, a 3% increase in the upcoming 2025, 2026 school year. And so this time, administration recommends, um, to the board approval of the budget so that we may present to the city council and also the county, um, at the joint meeting on March the 25th. And also, we will be, um, sending our proposal and our budget over to the city and county, um, upon the board's approval, if that's the board's desire.
Any questions? Hear none, seeking a, a motion?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Any more discussion officially about the budget? Hear none, all those in favor, making note by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and motion carries. Next up is Section 7, our public comment session. Um, clerk, have we had anybody sign up?
Yeah, no public comments.
Okay. Um, if there's anybody, uh, with us tonight that would like to, um, speak, we just ask that any citizen may address the board at any regular meeting. Persons wishing to appear before the school board should contact the superintendent or school board, board clerk, or complete the sign-up form for placement on the agenda. The chair is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the appropriateness of the subject being presented and the length of time for such presentation. No one will be allowed to make personal attacks on any Greensville County Public Schools personnel when addressing the board. No one will be allowed to make additional presentations until everyone has an opportunity to make an initial presentation, and the allotted period of time with the board during public comments is three minutes. If there's anybody from the floor that would like to speak. All right, moving to Section 8 is our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to announce that, um, upcoming, um, the board will be engaged in, uh, upcoming work session again on the 4th Tuesday, and also in this month of I'd like to announce that upcoming, the board will be engaged in upcoming work session again on the fourth Tuesday. And also, in this month of March, the board will be engaged with the Consortium of State School Board Association at the conference. And so, the board is looking forward to attending the component of the State School Boards Association upcoming conference and continue conversation with the Virginia School Boards Association as we move forward with this fiscal year. Those are the announcements right now, Mr. Jess.
The board members have any more? I guess I'll embarrass them then. I would like for everybody to wish a wonderful Mr. Pearson a happy birthday whenever you get a chance. Thank you. Yep, I had to slide that in, I'm sorry. All right, next, we will go back into closed session to finish our personnel reports and conversations about personnel pertaining to 2.2-3711A1. Seeking that motion?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, making note by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We now move back into closed session.
We'd like to come back out of closed session for our Monday, March tenth, two thousand twenty five Granger County School Board meeting. Clerk, can you say the time?
Board Chair Russ and Jesse?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gannett Robert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Our last or our next item this evening is action resulting from our closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, administration is seeking making the recommendation to the board for approval of the personnel agenda as presented in closed session.
And we can also include the student matters.
Oh, and also student matters. Yes, sir.
All right. Seeking a motion.
So move second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making note by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Here none ayes have it. Last item this evening is adjourned now. Seeking a motion.
So move second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making note by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. The meeting is now adjourned.